Good evening. On behalf of the Kansas Corporation Commission, I want to welcome you to tonight's public hearing. I'm Dwight Keane and I am the Chair of the Kansas Corporation Commission. Joining me this evening are my colleagues Commissioner Susan Duffy and Commissioner Andrew Franch. Before proceeding further, I would like to turn to each of my fellow commissioners to see if they have any opening remarks they might wish to make. For that end, I'll turn first to Commissioner Duffy.
Thank you and good evening Chair Keane and everybody who's here tonight. I understand we have a big crowd. Again, the Zoom technology is allowing us to meet with all of you wherever you live in this great state. And I'm taking copious notes tonight. I hope you are very good about sharing your thoughts and feelings because this is important. Unfortunately, I won't be able to have a conversation with you back and forth. So thank you again. Send your cards and letters if you have additional comments and thank you Chair Keane.
Thank you very much Commissioner Duffy. Any opening remarks Commissioner Franch please?
I don't have much to add, but I will say I'm also looking forward to hearing everybody's input. I'm glad to see so many people are interested in giving the input. And like Commissioner Duffy said, I think the technology is fantastic to allow more people to participate in these public hearings. So looking forward to the input tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, I certainly join with both of my fellow commissioners and their observations. I too am most pleased that we have a great turnout. We're interested in hearing what you have to say. To make participation in this hearing as convenient as possible for Evergi customers across the state, this hearing is being held virtually by Zoom with live streaming on YouTube. Please bear with us if you should experience any technical difficulties. I would note that while this entire public hearing will be available on YouTube, only the parts where the commissioners are present will be made a part of the official record of this docket. I will now call to order the public hearing in docket number 22 dash E K M E dash two five four dash G A R. This docket was initiated by Evergi to request approval of a portfolio of nine energy efficiency and demand side management programs for residential and business customers. The opinions of all rate payers are important to us. Thank you for your participation. Tonight's hearing will operate in two parts. The first part of this hearing is an informational session. Evergi will make a presentation regarding its energy efficiency program proposals. After which there will be an opportunity for you to ask questions. The commission will not be present during the first part of this evening's public hearing. At the conclusion of the question and answer session, the commission will rejoin the meeting to hear your public comments during part two of the hearing. I will now turn the hearing over to the commission's Assistant General Counsel and the pre-hearing officer in this docket, David Cohen. He will moderate part one of tonight's agenda. I hope that you'll find it informative and the commissioners will see you again for part two. The commission meeting stands in recess until the conclusion of part one of the hearing. Mr. Cohen, the floor is yours.
Thank you Chair Keane. Good evening. As stated earlier, we will begin part one with a presentation by Evergi to explain the energy efficiency program proposal. At the conclusion of at the conclusion of the presentation, we will hold a question and answer session lasting no more than 15 minutes to ensure adequate time for public comments. Participants who are registered to speak at the hearing will have the opportunity to ask questions about the proposal here tonight. If you're watching on YouTube and have questions that are not answered tonight, or there are more questions than we have time for, you may submit them via email and the commission's Public Affairs Office staff will will work to with Evergi to get the responses and post the complete list on our website. At the end of tonight's hearing, we'll provide more information on that process. I'll now introduce Kim Winslow, Senior Director of Energy Solutions and Brian File, Director of Demand Side Management at Evergi to discuss the energy efficiency program and answer questions.
Great, thank you David. I'll make sure that we have our presentation up. Okay, there we go. Can you hear me now? All right, perfect. All right. Well, good evening. Thank you for joining us tonight for the Kansas Energy Efficiency Investment Act or KIA public hearing. Evergi is excited to share with you how the energy efficiency plan that we filed with the Kansas Corporation Commission or K C C will help our residential and business customers save energy and money, both in the short term and the long term. I'm excited to be here and share with you our programs that are of utmost importance to our customers and Evergi. I'm passionate about the impact that we have made in our neighboring state and hope that we are able to make a similar impact in our Kansas communities. Tonight, we will provide an overview of our energy efficiency plan and programs and how our programs will provide greater support to income eligible and underserved customers and how our plan is proposed to be funded. My name is Kim Winslow, Senior Director of our team that develops energy solutions for our customers to manage electricity better or sometimes differently. It includes solutions such as energy efficiency, solar electrification and rates. I would also like to introduce my colleague Brian File, Director of Demand Side Management. Brian will be discussing our programs in greater detail later in the presentation. However, before we jump into the meat of the presentation, I'd like to share with you a short video that demonstrates Evergi's commitment to energy efficiency programs, affordability, reliability and sustainability. Can't hear the sound. Still working through some technical difficulties.
When you shared the screen, did you check the box to share sound also?
Probably not.
You can start it up, stop the share and start it over again. There is a little checkbox to share computer sound also.
Thank you. Let's try that.
Seeing energy differently means continually working to drive energy prices down even as costs around us rise. At Evergi, we're relying less on fossil fuels and more on renewable resources. We're investing in programs to help you use less energy, enabling us to decrease our rates over the last four years. Reliable, sustainable, affordable energy that puts you first. That's everything to us. Evergi, the utility company.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I love that video and I'm glad we were able to get that to work. I mean, it's really why we are here today to talk about our proposed plan and how we can help our customers through these programs for increased affordability, reliability and sustainability. Our efficiency, energy efficiency plan is proposed for four years or through 2026. It includes programs specifically for residential and business customers, income eligible and underserved customers. You may hear us refer to nine programs throughout tonight. However, our programs have many components that are designed to attract customers to participate and learn how to be more energy efficient. Our programs are developed to create benefits, which means that the benefits from our plan exceed our requested investment. Our plan is estimated to generate nearly $40 million or a ratio of twice the benefits to the requested investment. This plan's impact is far reaching and is expected to create jobs in your communities, both directly and indirectly. The plan will save energy equating to the energy of nearly 40,000 homes and will lower emissions in your communities from the reduced electricity. Many months of planning occurred prior to Evergi filing its plan. Our guiding principles included ensuring that our plan benefited all customers, not just those that participate by receiving a rebate for installing higher efficiency equipment or those that may change their behavior by simply changing their thermostat ever so slightly, but that all customers will benefit in the long run through avoidance of building additional generation, transmission or distribution infrastructure. We listened to our customers and our stakeholders to gain feedback in the development of our programs prior to the filing. We developed education value for all customer types. We believe that energy starts with education and making that behavior change. We are proposing to focus on that first and foremost. Our guiding principle is that these programs have options for all customers, no matter their situation. They could be a renter, an owner, a new home, small business, large business or income eligible. We also reviewed previous K C C orders and aligned our filing with the Kia statute, which was passed in 2014. Lastly, we developed a plan with a balanced set of programs for all customers to minimize bill and rate impact as these programs are recovered. And Brian's going to get into more of that later in the presentation. So what does it mean when we say that our plan benefits all customers? We highlight these four strategic areas that guided us. Our plan lowers energy costs and demand by reducing demand overall, which in turn lowers utility operational expense and reduces our need to build future generation. Our plan sets the foundation for a stronger economy. It benefits communities through creation of new jobs and businesses. Our plan provides for a cleaner energy future by reducing emissions to improve health through air quality improvement. Lastly, it provides greater access and affordability by boosting the economy through lower energy costs and an increase in disposable income. Understanding how our customers felt about energy efficiency was very important. In this case, this is even more true as it requires both customers to fund the investment and unlike some of our other initiatives, a customer's participation. Both the K C C staff and Evergi conducted two separate research studies to gain further understanding from residential customers on energy efficiency. We highlight some of these selected findings on this slide, but really there's three key takeaways for you. First, both studies validate that customers support energy efficiency. But there was an important second step to that question. Would customers want to invest in energy efficiency to have programs available? The simple answer was yes from nearly 80% of surveyed residential customers. Thirdly, customers felt that utilities were the best, were best positioned to administer and offer these energy efficiency programs. So here we are providing our residential customers the opportunity to participate in a robust portfolio of programs. In addition, we received feedback from our business customers and they believe that energy efficiency is also important. More than half of our largest customers indicated that they had, that had Evergi offered a rebate, they would have chosen more efficient equipment when replacing their existing equipment. Also, over one third say that they would replace inefficient equipment early before it's broken or needed if there was an Evergi rebate or incentive in place to help offset that cost and lower the payback period. Our proposed programs will increase operational effectiveness at businesses through replacement of inefficient equipment, which is very important in today's economy. Lastly, before I turn this over to Brian for more detail, I'd like to share with you our success in energy efficiency in Missouri. We embarked on energy efficiency programs with our Missouri customers in 2013, following the passage of energy efficiency legislation that is similar to Kia. Over the seven year period, we are proud to say that we saved over 1 billion kilowatt hours and engaged nearly 370,000 homes or about half of our Missouri customers in our energy efficiency programs. Our successive energy efficiency plans have made a very positive impact on business customers and created jobs from our programs. In addition, we have been very effective in our spend with nearly two to one ratio in benefits to each dollar spent, which is similar to this filing. We want our Kansas customers to have experience with lower energy use, provide increased support to our income eligible and underserved customers and realize similar benefits as our Missouri customers. With that, I will turn it over to Brian to further discuss our programs and cost impact.
Thanks, Kim. Again, I'm Brian File and I work here at Evergi to support the energy efficiency organization that bring all these customer programs to life. I thought I'd start by saying, sometimes people ask me, why would your job be to help people use less of your product? And I respond, actually, that's the coolest part. We get to help people do better and when customers do better, we all do better and the region thrives. So this, why we really love this effort and we are very excited to bring this stronger effort to Kansas on this front. Here's a snapshot of the nine proposed programs that you've heard about. It's a mix of program types, energy efficiency, demand response and education with a separate focus on underserved customers and income eligible ones as well. Small businesses and a particular focus on non-pro, not-for-profits as underserved on the business side also. These programs are then coupled with an incubator program to help allow for growth and innovation in programs as technology changes and/or work gaps identified to reach certain customers. These nine programs will be the same across both of our territories. Kansas Central or someone, some you might remember as former Westar and Kansas Metro, some you might remember as former K C P N L. While the programs are the same, there's a budget difference between the two based on the relative comparison of the size of the customer bases with Kansas Central being about three times as large as Kansas Metro. On the next few slides, I'll get into more of the details about the programs and the types of equipment, incentives and services associated that you can expect with each program. First, an example from the residential program set. Let's talk about one specific example, the whole home efficiency. It's the most comprehensive for residents. This program has multiple ways to upgrade your home and provide energy and bill savings year round on top of enhanced comfort. Starting at the top, you'll see many E E products, energy efficiency products that will be available for customers as they work with Evergi to upgrade their homes, to help them be more efficient from insulation and air sealing, as you see in the second part, to improve home comfort and really drive savings and comfort for people's homes. Our hard to reach residential program or those focused on low income and income qualified folks includes components that will provide no cost, no cost energy savings programs as well as weatherization. Specifically mentioned on that slide that I'll dig a little bit further in is there's been some strong interest in on bill financing. And we want to provide an option for customers to do this to upgrade their facility, their homes, which includes a cash flow positive way for customers that do not have credit checks. They get an investment in efficiency for the homes and that's in the investment stays with the home and it does not a loan that follows a person. The diamond diagram on the right demonstrates the process for customers to engage with Evergi to find if their house qualifies and can save enough energy to cover the costly upgrades. This program includes customer protections in such that there is independent verification and certification that the products are appropriate and the savings estimates exceed payments. We've heard a lot of feedback from customers wondering why did Evergi not include a pays program, a pay as you save program? It's very similar to what's been here. Actually, that is the program that we have approved in Missouri today. What we provide for Kansas is the benefit from us learning from that example in Missouri and providing what we believe to be a better option for Kansas customers. A couple of key facets that we want, that we find important with our proposal is that we can allow customers to pay off the financed amount early if their circumstances change, which isn't currently allowed in pay as you save. And we would also be able to use local Kansas contractors to implement the program, which isn't also currently allowed in pays. We believe that these small tweaks with our program, with our program will benefit customers, provide a better experience all the while still providing the same independent verification and consumers protections of the pays program. Additionally, I wanted to dig a little bit more into our income eligible customer program set and provide some more context on the things that we'll do here. I'm really excited to share that we'll be expected to invest in over $13 million in these programs and really working from the ground up with organizations that are focused on low income customers to help leverage their existing knowledge of the customer base and the efforts that they're doing and partner where it makes sense to deliver the programs in a way that's cost effective and the most impactful. We'll do that through expanding our weatherization program and also being focused on how do we continue our ongoing bill pay assistance for customers in need. In addition, we'll have better data that we can provide that understands the, this impact for this particular sector that will report annually on, on the results that we're providing for these customers. We'll have a new connect facility from Evergi built in Wichita that will be able to enable additional face-to-face interaction with demonstrations of the types of programs and products that we can provide to customers, which will include, as I discussed before, some of the free and discounted energy savings products. Next, we thought it would be cool to share with you a more concrete real example of the impact of one of our existing programs in Missouri, the Income Eligible Multifamily Program. This case study is a comprehensive example of how our program not only changed the energy profile, but improved the comfort for the residents. This is an income qualified small apartment complex in Nevada, Missouri with 24 units. They installed many split heat pumps and they're a great way to help older facilities transition from baseboard heat that makes a significant impact to lowering costs. In fact, energy, energy was reduced 63% at this facility and payback after the rebate was a little over four years. Just to note that customers talked with each other and this led to three other properties being upgraded afterwards. They found the great benefits from this program. Next, let's switch to hear a little sample of what business customers will see in terms of programs. This is the whole business efficiency overview and you'll see that a wide range of incentives for customers catered for their business type, whether it's a commercial office space or a manufacturing site. Business customers can achieve significant improvements in energy use with incentives for efficient upgrades of cooling systems, rooftop units, for example, or air handlers or process driven facilities like pumps and motors and drives, all driving energy savings and ultimately bill savings. For underserved or small business program will include all these components as well with increased rate rebate levels along with free energy assessments and kits to help those customers start on their journey to be more efficient for their facilities. Another few examples from the business side about how many, how they've been impacted by these programs in Missouri today, that we expect to see similar results in Kansas. There's a range of business types that you'll see here, starting with the left. We wanted to give you some real insight to a school district, Kansas City Public Schools, who over a three-year period transformed their lighting across the school system, providing over, with Evergi providing over $1 million in rebates that translated into over $2 million in annual savings for the school district. A very real impactful project. Along the right side, you can see the diversity of types of projects from different sectors with entertainment with the Kansas City Zoo, who had a payback on their project with H V A C and B F Ds in less than two years. Government type facilities with the courthouse in Buchanan County and healthcare facilities that are charged with making sure they have important airflow considerations that both benefit comfort, health and energy, all which can be beneficial from, benefit from these programs. So one more chance to get a feel for what is this, what are these programs really going to bring to me? We thought it'd be good to give you a few more examples. For example, on the top left, you'll see rebates on air conditioning equipment. Typically can average up to $700 for inputting a new, more efficient air conditioning unit. With an home auditor's help, you could receive up to $800 for increased insulation and air sealing. Across the top, you can see we have a receive a free or discounted thermostat as part of our demand response program. One of which has been one of the most participated programs in Missouri and previously in Kansas. We're also proposing an online marketplace where you can shop on your own and get insights into energy usage and various products to receive instant discounts. As well as businesses can instantly go through, can receive rebates instantly with prescriptive measures or go through a full audit of their facility to identify opportunities and put together a project plan for the best payback for them. It's really can be a unique or prescriptive as they want it to be as they get engaged with the programs. So you've heard more about the programs. Hopefully you're as excited about them as we are and getting a chance to be a part of this to make energy efficiency real in Kansas. But we want to make sure we answer an important question that you may be asking as well. How are these programs funded? So let's switch gears and explain a little bit about how this investment works and the details behind the financial recovery model and the impact to customers over the recovery of this plan period. So first, we've laid out three key points to help give some background and framing to the financial recovery investment of this plan. As you might recall, Kim mentioned the Kia statute. Inside the Kia law states that we treat investments in energy efficiency and demand side management, D S M, like supply side, power generation or distribution infrastructure. The really neat part about this is this is an investment in you and customers. Every proposal is a large investment in the customers on your demand side. In fact, it's about the third of the size of a typical power plant over three, over four years. Second, it's important to be transparent about how this all works as well. This proposal will result in a line item charge incremental to today's charges on all customer bills to pay for this upfront investment. On the next slide, I'll break in a little, I'll get into a little bit more of the breakout of costs on this line item charge and some estimates. But it's important to note that a tenant of our putting together this filing was to make sure to think about the rate impact and keeping it as reasonable as possible for customers as they make, as they make this investment over time. Which brings me to the third point. While this is a result in incremental charge, the savings from this investment pays back handsomely over time. The net positive impact of $40 million to customers after the cost. So this, so what this means is that when you take all the expected costs from that line item charge and you compare that to all the expected savings, because as you might imagine, if you put in a new air conditioner, you're going to save for 15 to 18 years and bring all those future dollar streams back to today, you'll get a net present doubt, net present value of $40 million. Way net positive. So a little bit more about the components of the line item charge that I mentioned. This will be actually in a transition of our existing energy efficiency rider that's in place today. On the left side of this slide, you'll see there's three main components for this line charge. And these are founded in the Kia statute. I'll quickly explain them all. First is a recovery of program costs, which will be reviewed and determined to be a prudent costs incurred to deliver these programs. Next is a lost revenue recovery based on incurred costs that are not uncovered through normal rates, which are third party validated as well. And performance incentive or earnings opportunity, as it's referred to in the file, is based on TV performance metrics outlined for participation. So those are the three components and on the right side, you'll see how these parts translate into your actual rates estimated on a monthly basis. The recovery period lasts six years and the range shows the expected for an average residential customer in Kansas, one to $4 per month. $1 as, $1 a month as we get started in the first couple of years and at the peak, $4 per month or $36 per year. For business, since there's a larger range of business types, we just show that the rate is per 1,000 kilowatt hours and that then would be multiplied the usage for that customer. For a small business customer who uses around 10,000 kilowatt hours a month, the charge would be around $10 a month. Now that we better understand the components and cost of the rates, let's put it all together. To visualize the investment and savings impact of this proposal, we show the comparison of the investment or what you'll pay and the return or bill savings for each jurisdiction. As a quick reminder, on the left, you'll see Kansas Central compared to right on Kansas Metro and Kansas Central is about three times as large relative to customer base. And this affects the outcome of this investment and bill savings. Again, the important point to note here is the net savings, as I mentioned, from a couple of slides back. The bill savings for this effort is over $40 million across both jurisdictions. And as you read at the top of the slide, the investment generates net savings. That is really the headline of this section. We have a way to fund this effort that is founded in Kansas law. It requires a reviewed and transparent investment from all customers, but returns significant dollars to customers over the life of all the equipment and the actions taken. So thank you so much for taking some time with us to be with us this evening. If what you've heard today has held your interest and maybe like in our case gets you excited and you want to know about the upcoming schedule, here's a snapshot. The commission wants to hear from you and there's a direct way to provide your feedback as you heard from the commissioners at the beginning. And as Kim stated and I'll reiterate, we're excited for this opportunity to bring energy efficiency programs to Kansas and we believe now is the right time to make an impact for our customers and the region. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim and Brian. We will now take questions for Evergi regarding the energy efficiency program application. If you're registered as a participant in the Zoom hearing, let us know you have a question by using the raise hand feature. This feature is part of your Zoom controls. Depending on your device, it may be part of the reactions, but when your name is called, your microphone will be unmuted. Please limit yourself to one question until Please limit yourself to one question until others have had an opportunity to ask their questions. We will come back around as time permits. Please refrain from any inappropriate language as that could result in the silencing of your microphone. I would like to remind everyone that the formal public comment period portion of the hearing does not begin until the commissioners rejoin us in part two. Feel free to ask questions at this time, but save your comments on the application until the appropriate time. So they can be recorded in the official record of the case. All right, it looks like we already have some hands. Great. So our first question will be Zach Pistoria.
Can you hear me? Thank you.
Yes, we can hear you.
Yep. Okay, great. Thank you, Kim and Brian for the presentation. A lot of information and I'm also excited about your programs. I'm curious, you said that power saved would be for 40,000 or so homes. But I'm curious, how many of your million or so Kansas customers will actually get an opportunity to receive these program directly? Programs directly. So how many customers will actually get to utilize your, your programs?
Can you hear me? Okay, thanks Zach. Yeah, good question. So hopefully the foundation of what I, what we presented comes through that there's going to be programs available for everybody to participate in. It's up to them and how they are engaged with their energy and their time and and willing to invest in in efficiency, depending on if they're income qualified, there'll be some programs that'll be free. Or if they're not, there's other pretty easy ways to get involved. But for example, what we've seen in Missouri that over the course of time, we've had upwards of half of our customers participate in programs. Although we don't have a specific estimate for Kansas, so I'm not exactly who's going to participate. We have designed them and built them so that anyone can participate.
Thanks. Our next hand I see is Mary English.
Hi, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I was curious about the assessment portion of the rebates. That is, it's kind of a two part question. So first, is that only a free assessment for low income qualifying households? And secondly, whether it is or isn't, what is that for a professional energy audit with blower door tests and an infrared scan or is it just a walkthrough?
Sure, thanks, Mary. Good question. Yeah, this is the fun stuff that really you got to get into. How's this going to help me in my house? So there's a couple of parts to what you're talking about, the assessment. And we use the words assessment very strict, you know, intentionally. Because that's meant to be a pretty much a walkthrough, a visual inspection, help with some direct installs of things, and that would be free to the customer. If we're going to go down the path of a, of a blower door test and understand various house building shell characteristics in order to to properly assess the insulation and air ceiling components. And there's usually work with a home monitor to help get a rebate for that part. So there'll be a rebate for that secondary part for insulation and the audit together.
Great. All right. So our next question and the last hand I see, so I guess if anyone else has any, feel free to get back in mind. Is, and I apologize if I'm going to mispronounce your name, Holger Meyer.
That was pretty close. Thank you. My question is, you've shown how much every customer residential and commercial is expected to pay roughly for this program. Out of that revenue generated, how much of it goes to residential? To the residential part of the program and how much of it goes to the commercial customers? More specifically, I'm interested that the fraction of your residential customers who are in the six, seven, two, fourteen zip code, for example, for more generally, also anders surfed, under represented customers to say break even with how much they pay in as a, as a share of the total. Or is this really a wealth distribution from the poor to the rich? Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the question, Holger. A good, good kind of characterization to make sure you understand how the breakout is between residential and business. And inside of the filing, there's some more specific numbers about the residential piece and the, and the business. Spill it out. It's effectively proportional to the amount of kilowatt hours that that customer uses. So and the business side of the costs go to the business side, the residential, the residential side in proportion to the amount of energy they use of our total. Roughly. I don't know those numbers off the top of my head directly. And then the second question, more specifically on underserved, specific zip code that you mentioned, six, seven, two, one, four. That is why we've carved out this special program type for income qualified, income eligible folks of only 13, over $13 million. So that we can provide these investments in their homes in in such a way that it's really no cost to them and no cost upfront, no cost along. They will pay the bill rate as you, as you saw there, but they didn't have to pay any of the investment costs in the actual efficiency for them. They get bill savings right away. And so it's meant to be a net positive and you'll see that in some of the benefit cost tests that we, that we provide as part of the proposal where we show the benefits are greater than the costs. And on the portfolio hole, it's a two benefit, $2 benefits for $1 cost. I don't have the very specific number for the income qualified program, but you can look that up as well to show the benefits that those customers will receive.
All right. Next, we have Matty Bell.
Hi, thanks for the presentation. So you mentioned that one of the reasons you weren't specifically including the PACE program, or I think the two reasons were one, because you said that customers wouldn't be able to pay off early with the PACE program and the other was that there wouldn't be local contractors. The second part is not true. You can, you do have local contractors with PACE. And the first part doesn't really take into account the whole point of PACE, which is like to make energy efficiency more affordable for like poor people. So I was wondering why you're not including PACE if like the benefits you've so clearly showed from having it in Missouri.
That seems more like a comment than a question, but I guess Brian, if you have, you want to speak to that.
Yeah, thanks, Matty. I'll just reiterate about the benefits specifically for Kansas. There's a few rules related to the licensed pays that we believe we can be improved upon. One of them being the term amount of the loan that can be paid off earlier and or the length of the term of the loan is very specific with the PACE licensed agreement. About the contractors, apologize if it didn't come across clear, but there are specific people who can offer pays that are licensed to do that. And currently I'm not familiar with those folks, more than one of them being licensed in Kansas. It's a very one specific one.
All right. Next, Carol Elaine Giselle.
Hi, appreciate this opportunity. I'm an environmental educator and recognize how important the education component of this is. Not only in terms of learning about energy efficiency and conservation, but the availability of the programs themselves. You really have given us very little information on how you intend to accomplish that. Will you be working with local community organizations or what?
I can, I can speak to that, Carol Elaine. Yeah, so our education process, I mean, it is, it can be varied. We want to be able to make sure that we meet the customer where they are. So for example, we are anticipating on doing some digital education campaigns. That will be, of course, we know that not all customers have access to, to, to digital, but that will be one facet that we will have to help customers get online, you know, input how they're utilizing energy and get some tips from that. I think in addition to that, as we've talked, Brian had mentioned very briefly, just around like our Connect Store, for example. We just announced that we were offering that in Wichita. And so the one that we have here in Kansas City, it provides an opportunity for customers to come and and look at the energy efficiency type products. And so that will be available in Wichita for a customer to come in and do that, the kind of the touch and feel and see of what those energy efficiency products are. But again, we want to make sure that customers are understanding how they're utilizing energy efficiency. We also intend to do a paper report to customers where it will arrive at their home and give them tips around how they can utilize their, their energy better as well as provide them, you know, options or understanding of what products that we offer or rebates that we offer too. So really trying to hit, you know, different ways, whether it be digital, paper or in person.
All right, next we have Sarah Greenwood.
Hi, thanks for letting me ask my question. I was curious if you could speak to the extent of funding that is eligible in terms of, you know, like what the timeline is and whether there's restrictions with matching grants or anything like that that people should be aware of. Grants or other funding rebates, sources, state, local, federal, that sort of thing.
I understand the correctly, question correctly. I'll at least, I'll start with this to say our proposal is meant to begin on January 1 of 2023 and run for four years. So we'll have a, a, a program cycle, a program life of that four years of the investment. There will be funds that will leverage along that same period of time from federal dollars that work for weatherization for income qualified, for example. There are a few energy efficiency tax credits that you can provide for home investments. I'm not a tax professional, so I won't speak too much further along that line. But the, you know, the, the, our partners will be able to help customers understand kind of what opportunities might be available in addition to Evergy opportunities.
All right. And again, I apologize if I'm not pronouncing correctly, Mosin Fatima, Fatimi.
Hi, thank you for the presentation and the opportunity. My name is Mosin Fatimi. I am talking to follow up on the education question. I was wondering, to what extent do you think it would be influential to, for, to provide educational materials and education? I'm a big believer in education. However, I'm wondering for the people who have to work their second or third jobs to be able to afford their current bills, how influential it would be for them to know like they, if they had like a more efficient appliances that they can't afford would decrease their energy consumption.
Yeah, I mean, I, excuse me. Machine, yes, I think it's very important that, that we continue to educate, I mean, all those different types of customers. And we had talked about earlier, Brian had also shown an appliance recycling program that is, you know, when, in that offer of that program, we will be educating customers around the cost of, of, you know, running that refrigerator, for example, that's in the garage, the extra refrigerator in the garage or maybe in the basement. So, so is that what you were meaning? Just want to make sure I understood your, your comment there.
My, my, I'm, I'm concerned that most of the energy efficiency solutions require upfront cost and investment. And for people who struggle with their current rates, it, it, it would not be affordable to follow educational tips. So that's my concern.
Gotcha. Okay, yeah. No, certainly. I mean, we do, we will have programs that do not require that upfront investment. But we also try and really stress that behavioral change too. You know, that you, you know, kind of alluded to is that it's very important that customers understand what is driving their, their energy usage. So if it is, you know, increasing the temperature on their thermostat or that extra refrigerator in their garage. I mean, that are some things that will not require upfront investment by our customers. But again, it's part of the education and training that we will seek to have with our customers.
Thank you.
All right, we got time for one more quick one if anyone has anything. Okay. Well, thank you, everyone who participated in the Q and A session. We will pause for a moment and welcome the commissioners back to the hearing and begin part two of tonight's hearing shortly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. I'm calling to order the Kansas Corporation Commission Public Hearing regarding docket number 22 dash K E M A dash two five four dash T A R. Evergy initiated this docket to request approval of a portfolio of nine energy efficiency and demand side management programs for residential and business customers. Once again, I'm Dwight Keen. I'm Chair of the Kansas Corporation Commission. My colleagues, Commissioner Susan Duffy and Commissioner Andrew French, join me in thanking you for attending this evening's public hearing. This hearing is on the record and the transcript will become an important part of the official docket file. Does the KCC staff have a recommendation regarding notice of this hearing?
Yes, Chair Keen. Staff has examined notice and reports that the Public Affairs and Consumer Protection Division at the Kansas Corporation Commission issued a press release informing the public of today's hearing on June 22, 2022. Prior to that notice, additional notice had been posted on the KCC website as of March 16, 2022. As well, Evergy notified customers of the public hearing via a bill message in their May bills. Paper customers got the message via their paper bill and email customers who can access their bill by logging on to their account would see the message with their bill online. As the date of this public hearing was changed from May 9th to today, June 27th, Evergy reached out to customers via a postcard for paper customers and an email for email customers to notify them of the date change. For these reasons, staff believes the public was well notified of today's public hearing and recommends a finding that notice was proper.
Thank you very much, Carly. If there are no objections, I will find that notice was proper and that the commission has jurisdiction. This hearing is an important step in our review and evaluation process. And we look forward to hearing your comments. We cannot engage in dialogue with you during the proceeding, however, we may, if necessary, ask questions for clarification. To assist with the public comments, I would like to introduce Linda Berry. Linda is the Director of Public Affairs and Consumer Protection at the KCC. Good evening, Linda.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Before we get started, I do want to mention that in addition to the public comments that are being offered this evening, the commission is accepting written comments until 5:00 PM on July 8th. So if you're watching on YouTube this evening, which I noticed quite a few people are, please feel free to submit a comment and I'll have more information about the various ways you can do that at the end of the public comment section tonight. So with that, just want to explain how this will work. Similar to the Q and A session, Zoom participants will raise their hand using your Zoom controls when you, if you'd like to make a comment, I'll call you in the order that you raise your hand. And when you do, you'll get a message to unmute your microphone. So once that's done, if you can, please state your name and spell it so our record is as accurate as possible and tell us which town or city you live in. record is as accurate as possible and tell us which town or city you live in. We'd appreciate that information as well. And because we have a number of people signed up to make comments and we want to hear from each and every one of you, if you could limit your comments to two minutes, I think we can get everybody in this evening and hear all of your thoughts on this. So with that, please feel free to raise your hands and I'll start calling on you. The first person that I'm seeing on the list is Mary O'Leary. Mary, can you unmute? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Mary O'Leary. I'm an Evergy customer living in Prairie Village, Kansas. I'm a proud Kansas resident, mother, and most importantly, a grandmother. Thinking about my grandbabies and all of our grandbabies is what brings me to speak to you today. I'm a member of Mothers Out Front because climate change is hurting the future for all of our grandchildren. We can change that for the better. I want, my husband and I, excuse me, my phone just went crazy. My husband and I are both retired teachers. We live in a small ranch home that is poorly insulated and in need of many energy efficient improvements. I want Evergy to provide energy efficiency programs like Pay as You Save in Kansas. Evergy is implementing Pay as You Save in Missouri. We need this program and others like it in Kansas. Kansas has more Evergy customers than Missouri, so why can't we benefit from energy efficient programs like Pay as You Save? Energy efficiency is literally the most affordable, safest, and cleanest way to meet energy demand. Evergy needs to increase its energy efficiency goals. Energy bills are increasing faster than incomes for many Kansans. I want all families to have access to energy efficient programs. These programs can reduce total energy demand, reduce pollution, and create jobs that enable parents to support their families. These programs will help all Kansas families today and help ensure we are leaving a safe and healthy world to our grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Our next public comment will come from Mary English.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
No, okay. Excellent. Okay. My name is Mary English. I am the Building Performance Program Manager at Metropolitan Energy Center and I'm a forty-year-old nonprofit that works across both Missouri and Kansas for efficiency and environmental justice. I'm also a Kansas resident. I live in Prairie Village, Kansas as well. I law'd Evergy for supporting energy efficiency through this act. I'm here to testify that it does not go far enough, however. Missing in the key includes rebates for professional in-person energy assessments. The Evergy report references a home energy occasion, education report, HER, as a digital home assessment tool. As it's described in a full Kia proposal document, it sounds like a potentially good awareness tool, but it would not be the same as professional energy assessment. Also, in the QA period this evening, it was stated that customers could claim a rebate potentially for an energy audit. That wasn't clear to me. I would request that this be made clear to cover a market rate for an energy audit. There is no substitute for a professional energy audit done by trained contractors. This is because home energy audits include the use of expensive equipment to test not just energy efficiency, but also for health and safety issues. There is no DIY audit that can match the tools and expertise of a professional. A free audit will encourage participation in this program. The home energy rebate program will spur more work and weatherization, which will lead to the creation of fuller level jobs and energy efficiency for the state of Kansas. Professionals in this space have a clear understanding of building performance and how it impacts building occupant health. This is a key as infrared imaging and testing can sometimes catch areas of mold growth in walls due to inefficiency. That's key, something that a DIY audit will most likely miss. Finally, it is recommended that Evergy add funds to promote upgrades of better energy codes, both commercial and residential buildings. Other states do this. That way, Kansas can turn its full attention to upgrading existing buildings because future buildings will be built to efficiency codes rather than just be retrofitted years down the road like we're doing now. Building efficiently upfront is much less expensive than retrofitting poor building features of the building. And thank you so much for your time. I too also want to just say what Mary before me said. The climate crisis is here and we need to show that we are reacting to that for future generations. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mary. The next public comment is from Joel Campbell.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to thank the commissioners for a chance to give a public comment. I really appreciate this opportunity. My name is Joel Campbell. I'm a member of the Sunrise Movement Lawrence. I'm a student at KU. I recently wrote an article that got published in the Kansas Reflector that goes into more details on my opinions on the matter. But I'll just kind of summarize my thoughts here. A fully funded Pay as You Save program will save customers money and improve our energy efficiency. Transparency on how Evergy is helping low-income residents is central to ensuring equity and allowing communities to own the low-income programs will let them ensure that their community is actually receiving the improvements that they need. It's really important to understand that Kansas is the fourth worst state in the United States in terms of energy efficiency. And we need to be doing as much as we can to improve this while also saving people money. Both of these things are incredibly important. And PAYS is a very excellent program that does both of those things. It does not increase customers' bills unlike Evergy's current plan, which I believe will increase customers' bills for about about one percent for a few years. Excuse me, before saving any money. The reasoning for not including pays is also a little bit frustrating. Just essentially that people who are better off will be able to pay off their bills faster, which is just great, you know, considering that the people who need the most help are the people who will, that won't really make a difference for. And also, the reasoning for the reasoning for local contractors not being involved isn't necessarily true. They have like a pays plan has minimum requirements that need to be met. And Evergy can train contractors. They can, you know, do those things if they like, but they just don't. And then the whole deal about like personal responsibility being the main thing is also very frustrating. And I don't agree with it because older homes are generally less expensive to live in and have older appliances and equipment. And that means that who, those who live in lower income housing pay the most for energy because they are the least energy efficient homes. This is not a personal responsibility issue and trying to paint it as such is a misrepresentation of the situation. And I'm very frustrated that they are trying to pin this on people who are just trying to get by and save money. Evergy needs to prioritize the well-being of their communities, not their profit. And this plan is not robust enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Carol Geisel is our next commenter.
Hello, my name is Carol Elaine Geisel. I live in Overland Park, Kansas, and I am an Evergy customer, have been so over twenty-three years. Would thank you for holding this public meeting for your ratepayers. I'm also currently volunteering as Chair of the Kansas Chapter of the Sierra Club, which has over five thousand members statewide. The Kansas Sierra Club, excuse me, I lost my, yeah, hold on. I need to find my document. The Kansas Sierra Club supports the adoption and implementation of energy efficiency and conservation plans by Evergy that will guarantee that all Kansans have access to affordable and reliable energy. The Sierra Club supports social justice and environmental equity. While strategies to address the climate crisis must be transformational, some underserved communities in Kansas simply lack the resources to adapt. Providing education about energy conservation and offering financial incentives to implement energy efficiency measures are critical to building resilience. The Sierra Club recognizes that energy efficiency and conservation measures provide the cleanest, cheapest, and safest increase in energy supply. By also reducing the demand for energy, particularly at peak load periods, Evergy could better meet the energy needs for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Carol. Our next commenter is Nancy Muma.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Muma and I live in Lawrence, Kansas, and I'm an Evergy customer. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. And I'm here to urge KCC and Evergy to add the key proposal to the Kia proposal, the Pay as You Save program and fully fund it to help the low-income Kansas have energy efficient homes. I'm a PhD in pharmacology and so I'm really concerned about the toxins that are produced by coal and natural gas-powered energy plants we have here in Lawrence and around the state. As you know, coal and natural gas-powered energy plants produce carbon dioxide, sulfur dioxide, nitrogen oxides, mercury, lead, and other heavy metals. These are toxic chemicals. They harm our health. They harm our environment. They cause all kinds of health problems, asthma, cancer, brain damage, even premature death. And among the many problems with these chemicals, we really lag behind energy efficiency in Kansas. We lag behind fossil fuel reductions. We need to increase the investment in the Pay as You Save program and other energy efficiency programs, especially for the low and middle-income Kansans that can't afford to do this on their own. And I really hope that you will fully fund the Pay as You Save program. You know, Lawrence citizens have suffered enough financial health and environmental impacts from coal and natural gas. We need to be on par with other states in energy efficiency. Kansas ranks forty-seventh in the nation in energy efficiency. So we are way behind. We really need to prioritize energy efficiency for renters, multifamily housing, low-income neighborhoods. Energy efficiency will reduce our reliance on coal and natural gas produced by energy. And so we need to improve the health of folks in Kansas, especially here in Lawrence, where we have a coal-fired engine, a coal-fired energy plant. So please, I urge you to include the Pay as You Save program and be transparent about the help you provide. Thank you so much for considering these requests.
Thank you, Nancy. Our next commenter is Liza McKinnon.
Hello, Commissioners. I am a homeowner and an Evergy customer. I'm an advocate of the PAYS program and wish to place my support behind requiring Evergy to offer this Pay as You Save payment program as part of their proposed energy efficiency and demand-side management program. I want a robust, fully funded Pay as You Save program, data transparency by zip code, six-six-zero-four-six minority trade allies, Lawrence, electric shut-off prevention, payment plan, and assistance programs connected to efficiency programs and community ownership and facilitation of low-income programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Mosen Fatimi.
Hi, thank you again for this opportunity. My name is Mosen Fatimi. I live in Lawrence and I am an Evergy customer. I come to this hearing from kind of a unique background as I am an architect who has professionally worked on improving energy efficiency in buildings. I'm an urban planner who's worked with utilities and their energy efficiency programs. And now I'm a PhD student at the University of Kansas researching energy justice. With any hats that I put on, low-income people, minorities, and people of color are underrepresented and underserved with regard to their energy needs. First, at first, as an architect, I understand that energy-efficient design and retrofits, LEED-certified and Energy Star buildings and energy-efficient home appliances are for the wealthy. Second, working for utilities and their energy efficiency program programs in Illinois, I have witnessed how large and wealthy consumers were offered free energy audits that cost thousands of dollars for which old ratepayers had paid while low-income communities were offered some discounted lamps. And third, these days I'm working directly with low-income people in my research who suffer from high energy burdens. And I witness what kind of sacrifices they have to make to keep their families warm and their lights on and what kind of pressure is imposed on them. And the organizations that are actually working with them, even those organizations need to have onsite psychiatrists for their employees because people's pain is so huge that not everyone can bear. So the bottom line is that it is great that Evergy has an energy efficiency plan, but utilities who enjoy their monopoly market power and their loyal customers should invest in their communities much, much more than they do now and are planning to do for in the future. Actually, or all Kansans and all Evergy customers do deserve to have access to the resources they need, needless of having psychiatrists for those basic needs. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next commenter is Uma Adka.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to participate in this hearing. My name is Uma Adka. I'm an Evergy customer living with my spouse and two children in Lawrence, Kansas. I appreciate the chance to offer a public comment in support of strong energy efficiency policy grounded in equity for our state. In my professional life, I served on the faculty of the University of Kansas School of Law, where my research and teaching center on energy law and policy and environmental law. So although I offer these comments purely in my individual capacity, not on behalf of the university or the law school, my work in this area reinforces a few points I want to emphasize in my comment today. First is this is a transitional moment in the electric power industry, as everyone here knows, and we have more information available than ever before to understand the linkages between energy efficiency and energy burden in low-income households. So this docket presents an opportunity for the commission to draw on that information to strengthen Evergy's proposal in ways that will make a real difference for low-income Kansans. Second, you know, intervenors in this docket have presented to the commission a host of reasons and specific suggestions for strengthening the Evergy proposal. And I want to amplify the recommendations of James Owen, who discusses at length there the pays concept that a number of people have commented on. It's already in use in other states and other aspects of inclusive financing for energy efficiency. Also, the testimony of Stacy Sherwood addresses the importance of targeting program elements to multifamily properties. So the proposal, it addresses a wide range of issues as it is, but as everything with electricity regulation, the details really matter. So there's a lot to be proud of in Kansas when it comes to energy, but our progress in energy efficiency so far is not one of them. So I really hope that the commission will take this opportunity to build on what energy has proposed and take it forward so that it gets us out of the persistent low-tier rankings and, you know, makes the difference that we all hope it can for for our state. Thanks for this opportunity.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Scott Alaguchi.
Thank you to the KCC Commissioners and staff for their work hearing this docket and to Evergy for applying again for approval. My name is Scott Alaguchi. I'm an Evergy customer and a ratepayer currently living in a multi-generational household in Douglas County, Kansas. I understand the KCC's obligation to the needs and value of a regulated monopoly such as Evergy and its investors and balancing those needs with the needs and value of a large number of diverse electricity company or customers and ratepayers in our state. There are several reasons the KCC has an important opportunity in this specific instance to approve Evergy's application with the addition of a robust, fully funded Pay as We Save program that includes meaningful, sustainable partnerships with local communities and businesses, residential stakeholders, and connection payment assistance programs. First, sustained demand-side management is long overdue in Kansas. The Kansas Energy Efficiency Investment Act was signed in 2014, at which point Evergy did not exist. My son entering his freshman year of high school this year was entering first grade that year. So there have been years of research and policy discussion at KCC and what is now Evergy preceding the creation of Kia as well. Second, the least expensive and the least polluting kilowatt hours are the ones Evergy does not need to generate. Energy efficiency at scale is a resource alongside generation resources. And Kansas has missed too many benefits from treating it as such. Third, climate disruptions, global conflict, and economic volatility will increasingly stress our energy infrastructure in our communities. Diversification and adaptability of our electricity portfolio are no longer optional, but rather are requisite for sustainable and affordable service. Additionally, the partnerships created through inclusive collaborative utility-managed DSM programs create additional benefits and resilience for our communities, our state, and our economy. And finally, Evergy has been implementing a successful DSM program with robust Pay as We Save capacity in Missouri. And while the comparative accidental benefits of residing in Kansas are obvious, they should not be held against this by withholding the same program and benefits here. We can make it work and leverage those benefits in Kansas as well. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment and for your time and attention to this.
Thank you, Scott. Our next speaker is Emily Wolf.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Emily Wolf and I'm a lifelong Kansan and also an employee with Metropolitan Energy Center. In addition to writing comments tonight, we also plan on submitting formal comments. While MEC is appreciative of Evergy's efforts in their proposed energy efficiency portfolio, we are urging them to also include a robust, fully funded PAYS program, data transparency by zip code, a minority trade allies program, electric shut-off prevention payment assistance programs, community ownership and electric shut-off prevention payment assistance programs, community ownership and facilitation of low-income programs, and resources to support jurisdictions as they adopt, implement, and comply with updated energy codes. I want to quickly highlight why MEC is encouraging Evergy to include resources to support jurisdictions as they adopt, implement, and comply with these codes. Thirty-plus states across the US and the District Columbia have utilities that are actively involved in supporting energy code compliance. For example, several Arizona utilities have programs that provide municipalities valuable co-training support and resources. In return, these utilities can count the energy savings towards their Kia equivalent legislation. Supporting energy code adoption compliance provides an opportunity for Evergy to have a critical role in the intersection of health, affordable housing, and energy equity, and support those municipalities that don't necessarily have access to these type of trainings and resources. Finally, through a robust energy efficiency portfolio and energy codes program, we have the opportunity to provide future generations healthy, durable, and truly affordable housing. According to HUD, affordable housing is defined in which the occupant is paying no more than thirty percent gross income for housing costs, including utilities. By having more efficient homes in our state, we can provide current and future home buyers affordable housing so they have additional money to invest in themselves, their families, and their local economy. Thank you for your time this evening and the valuable work you do for our state. Please don't hesitate to reach out with additional information.
Thank you, Emily. Our next speaker is Nikolai Jost-Epp.
Hello, uh, can you all hear me all right?
Yes.
Awesome. So hello, my name is Nikolai Jost-Epp, and I'm uh currently residing in Lawrence. Uh, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak this evening. Uh, I would like to echo what many have said so far. This proposal needs to be doing more to bring the benefits of energy efficiency to low-income customers and communities of color who have the highest energy burden and therefore stand to benefit the most from energy efficiency investments. I'd like to urge the KCC to include programs from the People's Energy Plan proposed by residents of the six-seven-two-one-four zip code, including pay-as-you-save, minority trade allies, utility shut-off prevention programs, and community ownership and data transparency programs. Firstly, pays offers twenty percent reductions on energy bills with no upfront costs or loans, and is also available to renters, making it uniquely important for accessibility. Without pays you save, energy efficiency investments are out of reach for many, and under the current proposal's one-point-two-five percent rate increase on utility bills for the first few years, many people will be paying for energy efficiency upgrades that they themselves cannot afford. Also, Evergy is implementing pays in Missouri, as many have pointed out, and it doesn't make sense why they're not offering it to their customers just one state over. Secondly, this proposal should include a plan to leverage energy efficiency programs to prevent involuntary disconnects. Streamlining customers with missed payments to energy efficiency programs and removing the cost barriers to these programs will reduce energy burdens, uh, in turn reducing missed payments. Lastly, energy efficiency can be a big source of job creation in Kansas. Keeping in mind that Black and Hispanic households have some of the highest energy burden, we should ensure that these downriver benefits of energy efficiency programs are equitably distributed by making sure to prioritize partnerships with community groups and businesses endorsed by uh the communities uh in order to implement these programs. Well, Evergy's Kia proposal is a step in the right direction. It does not do enough to promote energy equity in Kansas. Kansas ranks fourth worst in the country for energy efficiency. We need to bring the benefits of energy efficiency to everybody, regardless of how much money they make to catch up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Henry.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm very excited about the program. My name is Elizabeth Henry. I live in Olathe, Kansas. I've been very jealous of my daughter who lives in Missouri because she's had this for a while. Um, I I wish that we had started at the same time. My, the only thing I'd like to add to all the people's opinions that have preceded me is the, I have a problem with Evergy's idea of telling people how this is going to work. Bills are bills. There needs to be a more transparent way of letting people know that hopefully they, we will have this um pay-as-you-go. But how will they know? Most people open up their bills, put it in, or they look at it online. They have no idea that they might be saving money. So the the information part of it is my biggest problem. Otherwise, um, I certainly concur with everything everybody else said. We need to have as good as Missouri, if not better. And um, this is a perfect time because they're actually going, you're talking to everybody, they're talking to you. It's fantastic. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Our next speaker is Holger Meyer.
Hello, uh, my name is Holger Meyer. I'm an Evergy customer in Wichita, Kansas. I'm also a professor of physics at Wichita State University. Um, I want to echo what the first commenter said. Uh, we are in a climate crisis and it is very important to act to reduce carbon emissions as soon as possible and as efficiently as possible. This can best be done by allocating the limited resources of an energy efficiency program in those areas where they are going to have the largest impact. The program assets proposed by Evergy today does not meet that requirement. The program lists uh, nine areas and only part of one of those areas addresses uh allocating resources to low-income households where the energy inefficiency upgrades can have the largest impact with the smallest investment. So we need to focus on really enabling the low-income households to participate in this energy efficiency program. Whereas to the contrary, the program is proposed appears to be poised to allocate resources to increase energy efficiency in suburbia and make mentions that maybe never should have been built in the first place. So uh, while I want to see the energy efficiency program be implemented as soon as possible, uh, I really think that the current proposal doesn't pass muster and should be you know, significantly revised uh with pace has been mentioned repeatedly as only one of many possible improvements. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Maddie Bell.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, commissioners, thank you for your time and this opportunity. I am an Evergy customer, and I'm writing to ask that you require Evergy to include the following items in their Evergy efficiency plans. Uh, or speaking, I guess, robust, a robust, fully-funded pays-you-save program, data transparency by zip code, local minority trade allies, an electric shut-off uh prevention program, uh, payment as plan assistance program connections to efficiency programs and community ownership and facilitation of low-income programs. I am invested in these items for a number of reasons. I am concerned about climate change. My energy bill is high in the summer and winter due to poor insulation, and I fall into the donut hole of customers who do not qualify for low-income upgrades while not having enough money to be able to pay upfront costs before receiving tax rebates. I believe all people should be able to live in energy-efficient homes powered by clean energy at low costs. You can ensure that Kansans have access to affordable energy without fear of losing heating, cooling, or electricity. The pay-as-you-save program would allow people like me to afford energy efficiency upgrades and stop having to pay high prices just to stay at a livable temperature at home. Pays has a specific requirement that would protect, has specific requirements that would protect customers and keep Evergy accountable, and contractor training would follow a pays program. I have memories of winters where coming inside didn't feel like much of a change, and in the freeze of February twenty-twenty-one, our house would not, could not, could not get above sixty degrees without covering all of our windows with blankets. People died in Kansas from that freeze. Climate change, change means we will see more extreme temperatures more often. Energy efficiency upgrades are one way to make heating and cooling homes easier and less of a burden, both on energy companies and energy customers. A smaller toll on the energy grid means more people can use it and fewer blackouts. We know Evergy can do this. They have done it in Missouri, and we need more than a pilot program, which is what they have there, to reach vulnerable Kansans and make energy more affordable. It is also important that these upgrades give back to the communities they are done in and benefit energy-burning communities, which includes hiring local contractors, preferably Black, Indigenous, and people of color-owned businesses, and reaching energy-burning communities which have historically been ignored and marginalized. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is, and I'm not sure about the pronunciation, so I apologize in advance, Denary Lee Loma Jasso.
There, there we go. Um, yes, so thank you for holding this meeting. My name is Denary Lee Loma Jasso, and I am here as an Evergy customer in Lenox, Kansas. I'm a mechanical engineer working in construction management on solar farms, but it doesn't take my degree to realize that temperatures are increasing, therefore also increasing a risk of service interruption on the hottest days when energy demand is at its peak. Customers will want to keep the, their air conditioner on. Not only are these black and brownouts a safety issue, the potential addition of demand charges during peak times is not financially feasible for a majority of your customers, which is why I'm here today to advocate for KCC and Evergy to include strong, fully-funded, transparent energy efficiency, demand response, and pay-as-you-save programs that focus on low-to-moderate-income homeowners, renters, seniors, and other vulnerable populations. I was living in Texas during the twenty-twenty-one winter stormery that left at least two-hundred-and-ninety people dead and millions without power, water, or natural gas, some for months without an insight. Although energy efficiency would not have eliminated all the chaos that came with the storm, the people of Texas would have had a better chance to avoid such devastating consequences. As luck would have it, I was with my Texas native friends that day and was able to help them prepare to survive in their apartment for three days without heat and water before they found shelter with another family member because of the continuing blackout in their area. As others had enough money to flee to warmer states, or worse, others froze to death trying to give whatever body heat they had to their family members. As Kansas experiences the opposite of those awful uh storm with heat waves, again, I urge KCC and Evergy that without prioritizing low-to-moderate-income households, energy efficiency findings can perpetuate systemic inequities. If a large percentage of customers have energy efficiency implemented, we are less likely to overload the grid during these high-demand and peak instances, which would also give utilities opportunities to still make money during peak hours without a blackout. Data transparency by zip code should be used to ensure money spent on energy efficiency programs is prioritizing for low-to-moderate-income families using metrics that include missed payments and disconnected notices. Last thing, energy efficiency programs are offered by most other utilities in the country, and they're the most reliable, affordable energy supply available. As Kansas is the forty-seventh in the nation for energy efficiency, I would like to remind everyone here today that the Kansas Corporation Commission is meant to serve ratepayers, not utility companies. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Zach Pistor. You're still muted, Zach. There you go.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Good evening, commissioners. Zach Pistor of Lynwood, Kansas, Evergy customer, and I'm very grateful for my electrical service that provides me this comment tonight. Uh, my personal recommendation is for the KCC to approve Evergy's proposed suite of programs here in this docket to require Evergy to go above and beyond these programs and ensure there are more of their Kansas customers, especially the thousands of Kansas customers who face high energy burden or face continual threat of involuntary disconnection. Receive assistance from the utility to meaningfully reduce their energy demand behind the meter. Heck, my grocery store helps me save money on my groceries, one as a loyal customer. My car insurance company rewards me when I drive safer. Why doesn't my utility and utility regulators do more to reward its efficient energy users? As Evergy makes hundreds of millions of dollars in annual profits, receives a generous rate return on investment, the KCC needs to ensure that our public utility deploy energy efficiency, especially when it's commonly understood that it's our lowest-levelized cost and cleanest energy form. Ranked at the bottom among states for public utility tasked with efficient and sufficient services part of its exclusive service territory, they should be doing more to help all their customers receive consumer benefit for the lean use of energy consumption. Few more things, uh, just think, had we approved and required efficiency programs several years ago when our former Evergy companies first applied for it, we've seen those several benefits today. We need you to ensure that energy efficiency and demand-side resources are the first priority energy resource. We need more, maybe perhaps apply a performance-based ratemaking mechanism so that greater savings equal greater rewards. Um, maybe less disconnects is greater rewards, and let's have an average of three percent annual retail sales in terms of savings every year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Zach. Our next speaker is Dorothy Barnett.
Good evening, commissioners. Uh, Chair King, Commissioner Duffy, and French, thank you for hosting tonight's public hearing. Uh, the Climate and Energy Project has been advocating for energy efficiency as a climate solution for fifteen years. And in twenty-fourteen, we worked alongside the utilities to pass the Kansas Energy Efficiency Investment Act. In twenty-fifteen, we were very supportive of the KCPNL energy efficiency filing. We held a series of workshops across the metro to help people understand the programs that were being proposed. Uh, we were disappointed that the commission only approved half of the programs, but we were also disappointed that KCPNL chose not to move ahead with the programs that were approved. We've spent the last several years trying to pursue legislation to require energy efficiency investments from utilities. So as you can see, we are deeply invested in seeing equitable energy efficiency programs benefit the Kansans who need it most. And for that reason, we believe that Evergy has presented a good portfolio of programs, and we hope that you will approve them with a few modifications. And despite having the trademark pay-as-you-save in Missouri, um, they presented an inclusive financing program that we fear may not have the kind of consumer protections that are needed. Um, and I do want to clarify a couple of earlier statements about pays. Um, Kansas contractors can be utilized in pays as long as they sign an agreement with utility, the company that holds the pays license. Um, Evergy purports that, purports that pays is not a loan. However, it was stated that their program allows a customer to pay off the tariff early, and that certainly sounds like a loan to me. And we believe it's time to revisit cost-effectiveness testing. And the science is clear. We need climate action now. Investments in energy efficiency have positive health and safety impacts. Uh, we are able to burn less fossil fuels, use less water, and benefit those, and the benefit of those things can be quantified, and we should use them to determine the full value of the energy efficiency. I encourage you, commissioners, as we go through this docket, uh, to consider convening stakeholders to explore how we can move toward cost-effectiveness testing that can meet both the climate crisis and the energy transition we're facing. And we appreciate you so much. Thank you for listening to Kansans um this evening.
Thank you for your comment, Dorothy. I don't see anyone else uh with a raised hand. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment this evening? We're doing pretty well on time, so if there's anyone else who would like to speak, please don't hesitate to raise your hand. Anyone? Okay, well, um, we'll move on then. We appreciate those of you who did make a comment, though, um, very much. Yeah, so for, I'd like to provide you with some information now on submitting a public comment, particularly for those people who are watching on YouTube. Um, we have quite a few people watching today, and there is still time to submit a public comment. The deadline is five PM on Tuesday on July eighth. I'm sorry, that that slide is incorrect. Um, Michelle, could you back up one to submit a public comment? We'll have that up in a moment. Um, there we go. Thank you. So comments will be accepted through July eighth at five PM, and perhaps the easiest way to submit a comment is to go to the KCC's website, kcc.kas.gov. In the left navigation bar, and you'll see the image of our homepage. Um, there is a link that says your opinion matters. And when you get to that page, it will give you lots of information about this docket. Down at the bottom, you'll see that submit a comment is circled. If you click there, uh, you can quickly and easily enter your comment. If that's not the most convenient way for you to submit If that's not the most convenient way for you to submit a comment, you can also. Call the Public Affairs Office and the numbers are listed there and they're also on our website. Or you could send us an email as well to publicaffairs@kcc.kas.gov. Please include your name and city because all of these comments are documented and included in our docket filing. And one other thing I'd like to mention tonight is the question and answer period. That we went through earlier. If you have a question about Evergy's proposal that was not answered tonight, or you think of something. Later, if you could send an email with your name and your question to the Public Affairs Office. We'd like to have those by five o'clock Tuesday, June twenty eighth. Which is tomorrow and we will compile those questions and get a response from Evergy to post on our website. And and please be aware that this is for energy efficiency questions. And any other issues, please call Evergy directly to their customer service staff if if your question pertains to anything else, but. We do welcome your questions. Once you've seen the proposal, things might have occurred to you that that you would like to ask and we certainly want to get those answers out to everyone. So with that, I'm going to return the microphone to Chair King for closing comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Linda. And our thanks as well to all participants in this Zoom meeting and certainly to all of all of those of you who attended. Your, your comments are are really important and the commission very much appreciates them. With regard to the next steps, the commission will hold an evidentiary hearing on this matter beginning on August ninth, twenty twenty two, beginning at nine AM. And it will be conducted via Zoom. The commission will issue a decision in this matter on or before October twenty first, twenty twenty two. This concludes the public hearing. I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We, we are, Jared. Thanks once again, everybody. Appreciate your participation.
Take care, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.